Can I have all the aldermen back at their, um, stations, please? Okay, um, it is now 5:50 and we're going to go ahead and start the committee of the whole. Um, roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Newsome.
Present.
Alderman Turner.
Present.
Alderman Donaworth.
Present.
Alderman Florian.
Present.
Alderman Hayes. Alderman Bolton.
Present.
Alderman Guzman.
Present.
Alderman Martinez.
Present.
Alderman Felix.
Present.
Mayor Taylor.
Present.
You have a quorum, ma'am.
Um, can I have a first and a second for a motion to approve the committee of the whole, um, meeting minutes from Monday, November 4th, 2024? I need a first and a second.
Sumo.
Alderman Newsome was the first, I need a second.
Second.
Um, Alderman, uh, Felix. Um, roll call, please.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Turner.
Aye.
Donaworth.
Aye.
Florian.
Aye.
Hayes.
Aye.
Bolton.
Aye.
Guzman.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
Felix.
Aye.
Motion passed, ma'am.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Is there anybody here that wants to talk for the committee, um, of the whole during audience time?
I have a Mr. Tom Capine.
Yeah, I'm Tom Capine, we have Capine Studio. I'm Washington Street. I originally had another plan about to say, but since that, uh, um, was moved off onto a former, from the Finance Committee, I'd like to say this. After watching the way processes are done, and the sincere effort of everybody to do the right thing, it's clear that in the area of the arts, you really don't have a very good representation. And so what I'm proposing to you today is that you create a special council, a special arts council, that involves all the arts, because Waukegan is rich, rich with that. But you don't have a way of pulling it together. And I'm gonna give you a very simple financial, uh, way to think about this. You had an arts, uh, grant that was $400,000. You have a, a building improvement, facade improvement, that's $500,000. You have a new bridge going up that needs adornment. And there should be money involved in that, uh, if it's a state of Illinois thing, there should be money that is involved for the arts for that. If you took those things together, you could make magnificent things. You could do great things for the city. You wouldn't be painting sidewalks, you wouldn't be painting streets. You'd be making real art for people to really enjoy and, and make Waukegan a destination place. But you don't have the people in place to make that happen. And what I'm suggesting to you is you reach out in the community and find those real artists that have the ability to pull that together and consolidate your opportunities. Take this money, and this money, and that opportunity, and the lakefront, and things that you can do. Have a plan, so you're not caught flat-footed. You get $400,000 dumped on you, so what, what do we do now? We'll find the best people we have to make that happen. That's not the way it should happen. You should have a standing council that you go to for real advice in the arts. And that will grow the city, make it a destination place, and make everybody proud. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. That concludes the public portion, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Under Old Business, item A, um, this is an ordinance amending various, um, provision of the Waukegan Liquor Control Ordinance, 18, um, O-46 regarding Class C1 licenses. And this was sponsored by Alderman Guzman. Okay, counsel?
Yeah, and so, one of the requests that came out of the last committee of the whole was that everybody get a paper packet with all the proposed changes. So, do all the aldermen have their paper packets? Good, okay. So, uh, I think this one may have gotten a little bit out of order, it's actually behind 3B, but the proposed ordinance...
Stu, I, are we doing this for procedure? Because I'm just gonna call it a question, because I think we've, uh, gone this over, what is this, a third or fourth time? So I think everybody should have just know where they're going. We should just call the vote?
That's fine, I just wanted to make sure that everybody knew that they had the full text, uh, on paper in front of them.
And then we could just go to switch the vote.
So, you know, at this point, Mayor, um, did we get a first and a second on this one?
We did not yet, yeah.
Because this is actually, this isn't just discussion, there is an ordinance that is included in here.
Okay. Um, can I have a first?
I shall move.
Okay, Alderman Guzman, a second.
Second.
Um, Alderman Turner, um, questions to this.
I, um, again, I'm gonna call the que, uh...
There's still, do you still have to allow for questions? Any questions? Alderman Florian.
I, I'm still very concerned about this, um, putting a burden on to our, our staff that doesn't belong there. Um, there's been many times, just because of the process, when the application gets to City Council, we catch things that weren't caught along the way. I don't think our staff, um, should have the responsibility of, of deciding and, and saying, "Well, the alderman can just finally approve it." Oh, sure, yeah, that's, that's a great idea, where one alderman gets to decide something. That's, that's not a thing. We all have to vote, and it has to be a majority of people that vote on it. So I just, I think Alderman Newsome mentioned many reasons why this was originally instituted in the first place, and I just think we should stick with what has, the process that has been done in the past.
Okay, any other questions to the motion?
Yeah, if I may, excuse me. I, I'm really not clear what, what this, uh, section, uh, the first section, where we're gonna amend this, and bottom line is, we're gonna, uh, issue licenses without requiring approval of the City Council. Alderman Guzman, could you explain that to me?
Okay, so, um, as long as you're, uh, good faith, everything, no, um, no issues, you bypass the City Council for it. Unless you're, it's a new license.
Got it, thank you.
But you're talking about...
So are, are we going to question the order? Because this has been discussed back and forth, I mean, what is it, four times? So, I mean, I feel like we need a recorder just to rewind, and then just keep, press play, rewind, play, rewind, play. So I'm gonna call the question, let's get to vote. So we can move on to other, uh, issues that's been on here, like, six, seven months.
But I think this was voted down before, so if there's still people who want to talk about it, they should have the right to be able to do that, and then we will do the vote. Alderman Florian?
Well, I just want to emphasize what Mr., what Alderman Guzman said was, if there's no problems, that's with the prior owner. We have no idea what the new owner is gonna do. The, Alderman Newsome told me, the guy who bought the gas station on Grand Avenue fired all the old people that worked there and hired new people. You know, we, just because you have an old owner that doesn't break any rules, doesn't mean the new person's gonna be just as good. You have no control over who your new person's gonna be.
I said it last time, I'll say it again, much more quickly this time, is, the City Council needs to have the final say, because the residents of the city need to be able to come to us and hold our feet to the fire for approving a liquor license for a new owner. If someone doesn't do what they're supposed to do, we don't get to look back at the past owner and think, like Alderman Florian said, that the new owner's gonna do as good of a job, a better job, a worse job. It's to deal with the person that's in front of us, the applicant. And the City Council needs to make that determination, so that the residents can come to us, and, like I said, hold our feet to the fire if we don't do a good job. It, this ultimately becomes an end run around the application process. If somebody could just go buy an existing business, leverage that liquor license, and then do whatever they want. Yeah, sure, there's repercussions down the road, after maybe miners have been sold to, or somebody's been harmed, or a neighborhood's been disrupted. But it needs to come to us, so that we can do what we've been elected to do, which is make those decisions impacting each of those streets, blocks, neighborhoods, wards, and the city as a whole. The power should stay, the authority should stay, the discretion and privilege should stay with the City Council, not be given to a new owner to try to, like I said, you know, make an end runner, a shortcut around this process. The system, the process works as it is, there's absolutely no reason to change it now. I suspect it's only being done for one or two people, but it'll impact the city as a whole, and it'd be a bad decision to vote for this.
Okay, before I call the vote, the only thing I will say, as Liquor Commissioner, I will say it's very hard. It takes us a lot more money and a lot more staff time to go after enforcement rather than prevention. And I will just say that the amount of court time, lawyer fees, and everything else add up quite a bit. Last comment, Alderman Turner.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. So, the, the, this, the way this section reads, and that's what I was questioning, it, it actually says that this allows a purchasing entity to apply for and acquire a new license. So they're applicating, they're, they're still applying, they still, the staff still is gonna vet it, background check, insurance, or whatever those boxes that need to be checked. So they're still checking them, and it, this, this is gonna speed up that process, where it doesn't take three, four, six months for a new owner to get into business and start selling, so, I think it's...
Alderman Turner, I, I know that you can read, so I'm not implying that you can't, but it also then says, "Without requiring approval of the City Council." And I think that's just the part that, that rubs me the wrong way. Like, ultimately, it should come before City Council, and the elected official from each ward should make that determination, rather than allowing the business owners to come to some sort of an agreement, or be able to just push it through at the staff level, which could put unwanted and unnecessary pressure on the staff. Because then if it's approved at the staff level, not to say that they can't do a terrific job with it, then that's, the, the, the hammer ultimately falls, or could fall, on the staff member that approved it that maybe shouldn't have, or something like that. When it comes to us, we all have to sit up here and, 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 uh, face, you know, face the music for the decisions that we make. So, I think it has to come to City Council, that's the way it ultimately shakes out.
Okay.
I think we asked him before, Alderman Guzman, Alderman Turner's asking if he'll amend the section to remove without requiring approval of the City Council, which I think is the whole thrust of the, the modification of the ordinance, so it would be moot.
No, this is what takes so long, okay? There's, there's a three to four month, we're going back and forth, let's call the question, let's put the vote, and call it a day.
Okay.
Mayor, before you call a question, I just want to remind people for Committee of the Whole, even though there are 10 members, we've decided that five votes is enough to get something out of Committee of the Whole, because it's sufficient to, if you get five votes at full council, it's sufficient. So, we're just, that's...
Um, okay, roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Newsome.
Nay.
Turner.
Aye.
Donaworth.
No.
Florian.
No.
Hayes.
No.
Bolton.
No.
Guzman.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
Felix.
Aye.
Motion fails.
Um, this, item B, is a proposal for city involvement in community events, including the Hispanic Heritage Parade. This was brought by Alderman Felix.
We realize that in Committee of the Whole, you do vote normally, so would you like to record a vote?
Yes, I would, no. Oops, I forgot. Um, Mayor Taylor.
No.
Thank you. Item B, this is a proposal, not an ordinance, correct? Or are you doing an ordinance?
This, this, the, well, yeah, this was put forward by Alderman Felix in a form that would be sufficient, that you could, we can move it to council as an ordinance form if it gets sufficient votes, so... I think we, I, I think we advanced this, um, to Old Business last time.
Well, this is the first time it's been on a council.
Oh, okay, so, um, then I guess...
I think Alderman Felix wanted it voted on before, so that there'd be time for it to be before the January 9th, um, meeting, you know, when they start, um, doing the, um, special events, um, so that they would be able to do an RFP, rather than going through the special events process.
I'm sorry, I do apologize, this was on New Business last time, it is on Old Business, I thought this had been advanced up. And...
Well, if you guys don't mind, I can explain what it, what, what it is, and why it's, um, important we do it as soon as possible, if we decide, of course, uh, to move it forward. Because, um, this is just for this specific, uh, festival, the parade. The only reason why is because it's one of the biggest ones now, um, up to 30,000 estimated attendance. And the, one of the important things is that, that way, come January, or come, uh, yeah, come January, you know, this, December 31st, no, uh, yeah, December 31st, that 12, whatever, we don't have people, just anyone, applying. We're gonna actually request for people to propose something to us, and, and then we, the staff will determine, um, who's the most, you know, vetted viable, uh, partner, and then they will come to vote at the, on, on our end here. Uh, and the reason why I put that amount, uh, I'm kind of mirroring the Scoop event, how we're, we're involved in, in part, in, in ways of being a partner, but we do, um, have someone that has to propose, um, you know, uh, what they're gonna do with us, how, how are they gonna work with us?
So one question that came up, that, um, people who have heard about this in their community have asked, is, if we do this for the Hispanic Heritage Parade, are we going to do this for the Pride, Juneteenth, all of these? And how many parades are we gonna have? Is the Park District going to say, "Well, now it's a city event," and they're not going to contribute money, and they're all gonna become part of the city's responsibility? Which, honestly, we just don't have the funding to do that. So, many people feel like some of these events are specific to communities, um, and so that's been an issue, that's come up in my office, um, that residents have said, but again, a lot of residents haven't even heard about this yet, this is just the few that have heard it and called. So I just am throwing that out there for you guys to digest, because it has come up, and I just want you to absorb it a little bit, too. Um, because again, we don't always hear those things, so I'm just telling you things that have come to my office about.
I can answer that, too, on, on my end, I would like, uh, again, the reason why I meant, I led with 30,000 or more, it's one of the biggest events that we have, um, every year, and we have tons of people coming in, um, of course, and, and then we had this whole ordeal where there was such a, you know, so, so politicized, you know, uh, because we split the event in, in two ways, one year, and then the following year, we excluded people. I mean, there's always, there's reasons why some people were, didn't get the parade. This will have a process for that, because the parade's gonna be done anyways, right? But we want to make sure we have it, to hold the highest standard and the best possible quality, uh, parade, um, for, for our community. Because I mean, again, 30,000 people, that's a lot of people, and if they partner up with, with the city of Waukegan, that, that'd be great to have. Now, in terms of why, are, is, this is specifically for, for this parade. If someone wants to have a different parade for something else, bring it up. So if someone comes to you like, "Hey, how, how come we can't do this for you?" Be the, be the leader, and, uh, bring that forward, champion that parade, whoever brings that up to you guys. That's the best thing that you can do. Otherwise, you know, this is something that I, you know, in my, in the community, people are like, "Hey, you know, this is," not even only in the Hispanic community, a lot of communities enjoy the parade. Businesses flourish that day. It's a, it's a, it's a huge event, and, and it's something that I think we, we should do. Again, like the Scoop, you know, it's a great event, we partner up, we keep it safe, and, um, you know, I think what, planning ahead of time would be a good thing.
Well, Alderman Florian was first, and then I'll come back to you, okay?
Actually, I, I want to be a kind of a procedural stickler here. We didn't get a first and a second, and Alderman Newsome had asked about procedurally why this was. So, um, I think what we're actually talking about now is whether to advance this to discussion. And, um, Alderman Felix has kind of given a case of why this is, why this is important to him. Alderman Felix, could you make a motion to advance this to, uh, advance this forward?
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
If I can get a second.
Second.
To whether we're going to discuss...
I'll second it.
Continue discussing this right now.
So Alderman Felix, and second was Alderman Guzman. Um, roll call, please. Whether you just...
Wait, wait.
This is just procedurally whether we're discussing this right now, or whether the other agenda items are gonna come forward.
Okay, so, roll call, please.
Where was it supposed to be?
Well, I guess it would have gone last on Old Business.
Yeah, because it, apparently it was voted down. I don't remember that.
No, it wa, it was not voted down, I just looked back at the...
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it just didn't get discussed on Committee of the Whole, I thought it had been, it was my mistake.
So this is just to hear it at this time? Should, that we're advancing it above the other things?
Yeah.
Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
It may, we have...
To discuss it?
To discuss it right now. I, I have a feeling that this will not be a unanimous vote to, so if you could...
Do a roll call.
To discuss it at this point.
Just to discuss it, so this is a roll call, please.
Alderman Newsome.
Nay.
Turner.
No.
Donaworth.
Nope.
Florian.
No.
Pardon me?
No.
Hayes.
No.
Bolton.
Uh, no.
Guzman.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
Felix.
Aye.
Mayor Taylor.
I'm gonna go with a no.
Okay, so this will be, go down to the bottom of Old Business, um, it will be the new item 3E. So, we may get to it tonight, still.
Onto item C, can I have a first and a second on this one?
Um, I shall move.
Okay, Alderman Guzman, a second. I need a second on item C.
I'll second.
Okay, um, Alderman Bolton, and this is an ordinance amending the Waukegan Code of Ordinances regarding the terms of members of boards and commissions of the city. So, I think Alderman Guzman, you wanted to limit it to two terms?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, so, I proposed this because a lot of people just stay, stay on there forever and a day. And, um, okay, I listened to Noel, and I listened to Chief Fazer about, um, about, um, that they, well, Noel was actually, I think, more in favor of it, as long as we have people to cover these positions. So that's the question, to cover the positions. So, if, if, the state does this all the time with their appointees, okay? They just stay on there until the state finds somebody to reappoint somebody. So that's how I want ours to do. So they don't actually get, um, reappointed, they just continue to stay on there. So if there is nobody in that bo, eh, in for that, uh, board, they, they just continue to stay on there until there's somebody there to be reappointed. So, like, if we can't find somebody today, it doesn't mean we can't find somebody tomorrow, next week, next year, two years from now. Or, if a different administration comes in, maybe they want to switch the whole thing around and get their members out. Because there has been board members on there that people have complained about them. And then, what does the, uh, administration say? Well, we can't remove them because their reappointment is not until five years from now, and that's away from my term of, um, a mayorship. So now, you can replace them. After two terms, they could stay on there, you just don't reappoint them.
But you could technically not reappoint them when they come up, so if it's a four-year term, which I don't think there's any boards that are more than four years, you, you vote on all those appointees. So if there's issues that come up at that time, that, like you're saying, I've heard somebody, you know, there's complaints about this person, you could do it. You could turn around and say, "I'm not reappointing this person." And, because they all come before the council to be reappointed. So, um, the problem that we've had in, in more recent years is that we don't have people, many households are working two jobs, they don't have the ability to do volunteerism in the community, which all of these boards are volunteers, you know, volunteerism boards. So, I think that when, because you guys have the choice on a council, that you can reappoint or decide not to reappoint, you're still leaving that door open, whether or not they should or should not be reappointed.
Uh, if you look at the percentage, every single one has been reappointed, nobody stays there very long. They reappoint, but that doesn't mean that somebody else is not gonna be reappointed some, at another time. So I understand the whole, uh, process of not having people to, um, to sit on these boards, but the state does it all the time, they just have them sit there, they just don't get reappointed. Even though that board, uh, or commission sends letters to the state of Illinois and says, "Hey, um, these, this person, uh, their term is up, can you reappoint them, or can, uh, or, or, or find somebody else?" They just don't. They do it when they want to, when they find the correct person to be reappointed for that position. And that's how the city of Waukegan should do. Not after two terms, you just don't reappoint until you find somebody new. And then, when you find somebody new, then they do the job. Because, I mean, these positions weren't, you weren't born for this position. I understand people fight tooth and nail for it, but I've been trying to figure out why? They fight tooth, tooth and nail for these positions, but they do. So the thing is this, there was theirs, and they went through the same process, same process. Somebody before them, they did the same thing. They fought tooth and nail for this, to get onto that board.
Okay.
Until somebody convinced them to move forward, then they just, they got to move forward.
Okay.
But just because we can't find somebody to, for this position, that doesn't mean somebody else can't find somebody else for this position.
Okay, I'm gonna do Alderman Martinez, and Alderman Florian, and then Alderman...
Yeah, I, I think Noel said it best, when she said, "We, it's not like we got a bullpen of players ready, they're turning that bad to play." Um, these boards have been around for, for a long time, and you have some very prominent pillars in our community who, like the mayor stated, that do volunteer, and who, who give back, and take, for example, the Waukegan Housing Authority, what, what they're doing, they're, they build up a whole development, you have, um, you have investors who, who have invested in Waukegan, who's, who would like to work with people who are already investing in, in knowing how the process works, because they're established, they've been doing it for a long time. And then you, you also have people out in the community whose main focus is to disrupt the whole process. So let's all consider that, too, and look at the, look, look at who we have, we have Illinois Rose, uh, Eleanor Murky, uh, we have, uh, uh, Hesu Karana, these, these are prominent people in the community who are established. And so, again, we really need to look at this, and I think that, to me, if it isn't, if it isn't broken, don't try to fix it. You know, I think what, what we need to do is leave that alone, because we, they are advancing, if you look, if you, if you look at, at these, at these, uh, these programs, these are, they've been around for a while, and they're all doing great. If people want to complain, let them complain, that's why they come up here and complain. But, again, I just wa, also want to put the fact out there that there's some people, again, as, as I mentioned, are, are, whose main soul, uh, is, is to disrupt the whole process, you know? I think we need to think that over, and, and leave it as it is.
Alderman Florian?
Thank you, Mayor, thank you for those words, Tony, I appreciate that. So I have a couple of questions, Alderman Guzman, have you served on a board voluntarily before?
Uh, yes, I have, but that's, I mean, even if I sat on that board, right? And somebody came in and replaced me, they just replaced me, it's, my term is up. But if not, I would just stay on that board and seated until they found a replacement. But no, we don't have to replace them. The state doesn't replace them, so...
We're not talking about the state. I, I know you work for the state, and you like to talk about the state, but we're talking about Waukegan and Waukegan system.
Okay.
So, um, when, when someone, as, as Alderman Martinez said, when someone has been on a board for a while, sometimes it takes a while to get up to speed. You don't, you don't know what you're doing day one on some of these boards and commissions. So, when we have someone who's willing to continue to serve, and we don't have people, as Noel said, in the bullpen waiting, you know, another question I have for you, how many people have you recommended for the library board, or the planning and zoning, or anything, since you've been here?
Let's not do an exchange, let's just...
Alderman Florian, then keep them there, but just don't reappoint them.
Not making it an exchange, just say your comments and not get into a debate.
Well, I, I think we need to leave the system the way it is. We're not, you're not saying you want to have us have term limits. So why should we impose them on someone else?
Okay, Alderman Turner.
Thank you. I agree. I think there needs to be term limits. Some folk have been sitting on these committees for multiple three, four, five terms, some decade or more. The concern I have about the, the proposal, as it were, so even if, if the person's term expired, and, and this is not directed at the mayor, Mayor Taylor, any mayor could just say, well, I just won't ask anybody else to join and I'll just keep you on there forever, right? So I mean, it wouldn't make any difference. So I think if we're going to, if we're going to do, if we're going to do a man, a term limit, it should be a mandatory term limit. And then there should be a process by which solicitation is publicized to the public, do you want to join or would you like to serve on this committee? Now, and, and again, these, to your point, these committees are not, you're not born to them. None of these seats, including ours, belong to us, right? They are public seats. So I think if you're going to do it, Alderman Guzman, we need to have a mandatory term limit and a facility by which solicitation for membership and then continuation of the committee.
Alderman Hayes.
Thank you, Alderman Turner, for that. Thank you, Mayor. So I think, as Alderman Martinez said, this is a solution without a problem. The city of Waukegan has a record of having a hard time attracting people to apply for paid jobs. We put job postings out for months, even longer than that, just to get people to come here to work and get paid for it. So now we're talking about volunteer positions. We do not have people lining up to take volunteer positions. We don't have records of anybody not doing their job on these boards. We have a record of struggling to fill these seats. What I've seen since I've been up here are seating very qualified people on some of these boards. As has been mentioned, previously, we appointed a high-ranking member of the Coast Guard to sit on the pork district board. We have the president of a local bank who sits on the library board. We have a, I don't, I don't know if he's an MBA or not, but a, a financial executive with experience managing pensions, sitting on the fire pension board or whatever it's called, forgive me. We have very qualified people. Why would we disrespect them in such a way to limit their terms? Or say that you can only serve for a certain amount of time? These are people with expertise that none of us possess, that have given up their free time to sit on these boards to help us out. We're not going to go find somebody. We'd have a hard time digging our way out of committee of the whole. We're not going to be able to go out and find qualified individuals to sit on these boards. I'm not going to do it. I can't make that part of my job responsibility. I will meet individuals. I will take an interest in what they do. And if I think there's a open position on a board, I would recommend them, as I've done in the past, as Alderman Florian has done in the past. Alderman Donahworth, if he wanted to see somebody changed on a board, he might recommend somebody. The solution here, or the end result, is not to enact term limits on boards where we already have great people serving. If we want to see a change on that board, then it's incumbent upon us to go seek out individuals on our own free time, if you want to see that change. Go do it yourself, go find somebody and, and make a case for why they should sit on the board instead of somebody else. But putting this, this is, this is not something that the city council needs to concern itself with. People come before us, we evaluate their applications, we evaluate their credentials, we evaluate why they want to be on that board and we approve them or not. But going out and starting that process ourselves does, is not necessarily our responsibility. The system works as it is. It's not broken. We're not having a problem with it. Why would we change it? It, it seems, as I said, I think it's disrespectful to the people who give up their free time to sit on the boards as it is, to tell them that we're going to kick them off arbitrarily.
I will say that we do put out on our website open positions for these boards. I have to be honest, we don't get people beating down our doors. It usually comes from an Alderman recommendation or, you know, somebody in the community that has said, hey, you'd be good at this. But people just don't put in their resumes for these positions. We just don't get it. We have had an open position on planning and zoning now. Is it two years, three years, four years? So like people are not beating down the doors for this. So, but how about we take a vote on it?
So one final comment. Okay, so I'm not saying kicking them off or anything like that. I'm just saying, don't reappoint them after two terms if you can't find anybody. Still keep the same thing, still keep the same people, no problem.
But is that what the ordinance says?
If you're, if, how can you say you're not kicking them off, but then at the end of their two terms, they're done? That is kicking them off.
No, no, no. You just don't reappoint them. Okay? So that means, that means, go ahead, Stu.
Comment here.
I'm, I'm just going to respond directly to the question, though, and this is in the packet as well. Under term, the proposed amendment, part of it says that the members of boards of commissions of the city will serve terms of length, provided in this article, which is two terms. Members of boards and commissions may continue to serve beyond their terms until their successors are appointed. That language is pretty common in, throughout the state statutes. In this case, as Alderman Turner pointed out, though, it could also be extended based on, you know, however long it takes, the, the mayor makes a nomination, so.
See, so that, there you go. I mean, it's very easy.
You're saying, we want you to stay on long enough to find your replacement, but that's it. You, you're, we, we appreciate your service, your two terms are up, but please stay until we find someone to replace you. I think that's very disrespectful to do to someone. And again, I'll say, you're not saying we are going to be term limited. We can get elected as many times as we want. Like Alderman Newsom, five times, Alderman Bolton, two times, me two ti, so we can get elected as many times as we want, but the people on the boards who do it for free, they got to go.
Okay, we're going to go ahead and call this. Let's do a vote, please. Alderman Newsom.
Nay.
Turner.
Aye.
Donahworth.
Aye.
Florian.
No.
Hayes.
No.
Bolton.
No.
Guzman.
Aye.
Martinez.
No.
Felix.
Aye.
Taylor.
No.
Item D. Can I have a first and a second on this?
So move.
Second.
Okay, Alderman Martinez, second was Alderman Guzman. And this is an ordinance amending section 21 dash 130 of the Waukegan Code of Ordinances to revise hours for alternate parking restrictions.
All right, so I brought this up again. This is one of mine. Okay, so the old ordinance used to be from midnight to 6:00 AM. They extended it to midnight to 12:00 PM. So the problem I have with this, okay, and I've had multiple complaints about this. All right, let's say you're an early riser, you go to the gym, you have breakfast, you have coffee with your friends at McDonald's, and you have your own driveway, so you have no problem during the, during the evening hour, during the overnight hours. Then you said, well, you know what? I'm, I'm going to leave in about half an hour, 40 minutes. So you decide to park in the street. So you go inside, you do what you have to do and your chores or whatever. You come back, there's a ticket right there on your visor because it's before noon. It, it, it's just insane to me, insane to me. So I understand why it was proposed. And I have spoken to Chief Devaro and Director Garland about this. And we, we came into agreement that it would be 6:00 AM and only during like, what was it, from April 1st to October 31st, I think? So it won't interfere with the plowing. And then from, what is it, Octo, oh, I think it was November 31st or something. I, I don't remember the exact date on it. And, okay, sorry, here it is. So it would go from March, November 1st to March 31st, and then from April 1st to October 31st to 6:00 AM. So it won't interfere with snow and ice or anything, anything like that.
I'm going to call Alderman Newsom on this because you remember the big controversy that this was a while back.
We've changed this ordinance so many times till the residents can't even figure out what the ordinance is. This has been going on for 20 years. This ordinance has been in effect since the 80s. You have to be responsible. If you know that there is a law and ordinance on the books that says that you cannot park on the street during the hours of 12:01 midnight till 11:59 AM, you got to be responsible enough and be thinking about that. You can't change your ordinance every time somebody comes and say, well, I don't like that ordinance, it doesn't fit me. I have to abide by the ordinance too. I have to think, when I come home, I better park in the, in the driveway, or I better get on the right side of the street. I have so many residents calling me that says, please have the police enforce this ordinance. There are so many cars on my street, on both sides of the street. I need somebody to come down here and write some tickets. These cars, some of them don't have city stickers, some of them don't have plates, some of them don't belong on the street, they belong over in an apartment complex somewhere. This car has been sitting on the street for a week without changing sides? How, how are the police supposed to know if this car is not supposed to be there or not? If they're not, if they're just sitting there and they're not using the alternate parking? I think we need to leave this ordinance like it is. It helps public works. It helps the residents know that, okay, this is the ordinance and I need to remember and abide by it. Sure, I got a few people that call me and they got a ticket. I said, well, now you know what the ordinance is. They haven't called me anymore because they make sure that they get on the right side of the street. It's called responsibility. And if you have a person that comes to work in your yard or work at your house or something, let them use your driveway. And you get on the right side of the street. It's called responsibility and abiding by the ordinance.
What I will say about this is that when we have had it in the past and it was divided into like such and such a time, you could be on it and, you know, for six months, it was this time and six months, another time. It was so confusing to residents that they couldn't keep track of what day of the week it was, let alone, you know, oh, this is the first of November. And it created a lot of complaints. As a former Alderman myself, I do remember this coming up over and over and over again. There is a past history here and it is something that we just need to be aware of, that if we keep changing this, people are never going to learn what the hours are. So whatever you guys decide to do, you're the legislators, I think you have to be conscious of the fact that if you keep changing things, people are never going to understand what the ordinance actually is. Alderman Florian.
I just want to say, I, I've been up here five years, five and a half almost. I get way more calls about why aren't you enforcing this than I do about people complaining about it. I had one guy call me because his wife teaches piano lessons and the student parked in front of the house and got a ticket. And he said, well, you guys need to have a sign up. Well, there is a sign. So I took a picture of the sign at the front of the subdivision and I sent it over to him. There's a sign that says, and, and like Alderman Newsom said, it's, it's your responsibility as a resident to know what the ordinances are. But we do have a sign at the front of my subdivision that gives the rules right there. Now, obviously not everyone reads it, but I, I personally have many more complaints about not enforcing it because people don't want cars parked all over the neighborhood and cars that sit there and don't move and that kind of stuff.
Can I add one more thing? That people think that the parking on the street in front of their house is theirs and they don't want the neighbor to park in front of their house and they will threaten them. I've gotten those calls. No, this, this parking in front of your house is not yours. You park on the opposite side of the street the next day. This parking space is not yours.
Can I, can I just say something? You know, and I have to agree, I think it's, it's something, being responsible, that's the bottom line. But the fact is that we also have to consider the cost to the city. We're talking about if it does pass, isn't there a cost to change the signs? And do, and do we have the revenue for that?
Absolutely, and it's a big cost. Be the first time that we have absorbed this cost. We seem to change them every few years. And so it's another big cost to the city. But the most difficult part is for residents to actually learn. It takes residents like five years to understand what the actual hours are. And then if you change them again, then we're back to, well, what are the rules? So we, somewhere along the line, there needs to be some consistency because since I was an Alderman from 2015, this has been a chronic thing that has come up and it's a repeat all the time of the same issue. That's why I wanted Alderman Newsom to speak on it because she's been here a lot longer than I was and so I know she's heard it all. So, but if there's no objections, I'll call the vote on this.
Actually, I would like to say for the final, okay, so the proposal is not to get rid of alternative parking. It's just, the proposal is to stop it at 6:00 AM. Okay? That's it.
Months out of the year.
Not go all the way till 12:00.
But just for those six-ish months out of the year, you want to stop it at 6:00 AM, right?
Yes, only for the six months because of the snow and ice. So they can get the plows back and forth.
I think my, my two cents on this is when in doubt, keep it simple. And if we just have, yeah, yeah, we've done that before. We changed it while I was up here, keeping it simple. Everyone knows it's one set time for the entire year. It's, I think it's the best approach, at least for my feeble mind to be able to keep it straight.
Alderman Newsom.
No, I, I was just saying that we, we've changed that before. We've changed the, the month, we changed the time, we've changed the date, we've changed all of that stuff. People need to know exactly what the ordinance is and, and have it set. So this is what I have to do.
And obviously, people are still having a hard time with it because they're still calling. So, but we'll, we'll call for the vote on this. So this would be to revise the hours. So roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Newsom.
Nay.
Turner.
Aye.
Donahworth.
Aye.
Florian.
No.
Hayes.
No.
Bolton.
No.
Guzman.
Aye.
Martinez.
No.
Felix.
Aye.
Mayor Taylor.
No.
Six to four. Roshan fails.
Item E, can I have a first and a second to this?
Actually, I'm going to remove this from the docket.
For tonight or forever?
Most, I, we move it all together.
Just to, for clarity, Alderman Guzman and I are, have discussed this and we're actually going to ask for an opinion from the Illinois Liquor Commission. There, the, the statute is horribly written and there's an indication that there may be some clarity that we can get from the Illinois Liquor Commission's legal department that actually will resolve this issue.
Well, now we're back to item B, which is the city involvement in community events. And so can I have a first and a second now that we voted to whether or not we want a discussion? Now this is actually to bring it forth.
I shall move.
Who was that?
Alderman Guzman.
Okay, Alderman Guzman, a second.
Second.
Alderman Felix. Okay, this is the discussion period. We're back to the community events for the Hispanic Heritage Parade. Anybody have anything that they would like to say that?
I do. So as you indicated briefly, in our brief discussion earlier, Mayor, I don't think don't think it's, it's, uh, fair, uh, if the city takes this over, and that's what it is. You call it a partnership. What it is, is the city taking it over, and then we're gonna add another budget to our, uh, line item, to our budget. And also, the fairness, you know, i, i, any other ethnic, ethnicity comes up and says, "Hey, I want to do a celebration of Filipino culture" or whatever, whatever it might be, then we're gonna find ourselves in the, in a position of, "Well, why are you doing, the city doing for them and giving them $50,000, but not us"? And, and that's one. And then, two, just the idea of, you know, taking over an, an event, that, these folks have been doing it, I mean, the last two years is not the first two years that this parade has been going on in Waukegan. It's been like 20 years or something, right? So, I say, leave it as it is, again, to Tom's point, looking for a solution to a problem that doesn't exist. We did have some problematic, uh, challenges, uh, last year, yeah, last year. I don't, I don't think that's, I don't think we really need to bother with this. I, I disagree with the concept of government involving itself in every iota of everybody's life.
Can I, can I respond to that? Um, so, the difference is, again, uh, the main thing is, big difference is this 30,000 people coming into this, and there has been issues, two years in a row. And, and allegedly, there is, there is a lot of, you know, well, the first year, we had, uh, someone, two parties fighting over, um, who should be doing it, right?
So, we solved that now, right?
What was that?
We got that fixed. That's not gonna happen again.
Right, I'm, I'm going over.
And that was, that was the Alderman who determined there should be two parades. So, like, that, that came to you guys to resolve.
Right. So, this is to help alleviate that, and it, we're talking about vetted people. Uh, this is, uh, the community, this is a hu, huge Hispanic community. We're talking about 60 or more people, people that you're asking for their vote, uh, Alderman Turner, and...
I asked for everyone's vote. Vote for me.
Exactly. So, and, and this is, uh, 30,000 people, uh, come to visit the, uh, the, the city of Waukegan for this parade, one of the largest ones in, 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 in the area. We do also, I mean, a good example of this is the SCOOP. You guys have no issues doing it. SCOOP is a good event. It's, you know, it's, you, you don't agree with it, Alderman Turner? You don't like doing it?
The SCOOP was taken over by the city again. Oh, we're gonna partner with North Shore Ros. It led to an immediate lawsuit, and SCOOP was much less, uh, efficient until maybe five years later. So, no, it's not a good idea.
SCOOP is, is, last year, it was great. It was a good event.
The years after that, yeah?
Now, it's SCOOP. I mean, there, there, obvi, yeah, there's, there's been challenges there. Um, and that's, that's the reason, I, I think, I think it's, it would be, we all will ask for a request for proposal, so it wouldn't mean that anyone can just apply and get it. We would, they have to be vetted. They have to be, um, have a certificate of good standing from the state. So, that means these, um, not-for-profits or whoever it's gonna be, has to be, uh, certified that they, they are in good standing. So, some of these people that are, um, that, uh, do bad, bad work, they would have to, uh, be vetted.
Alderman Martinez?
Yeah, and I, and I have to agree with Alderman Felix. I mean, it, it's, we need to take more of an active role and get more involved with, with what's, what's going on with the parade and stuff. And the only thing I don't agree with is the $50,000 budget. Is there a $50,000 budget that's added to it? I think we should lessen that. But, but I think it's great. I, I think it's something that we can all, you know, um, uh, Waukegan's made us a great big melting pot. It's culturally diverse, and it's about time that we play an active role as Aldermen and say, "Hey, look, just, let's help you promote it".
And I'm not hard on the $50,000 either. I'm, you know, I'm open to what the staff would recommend and whatnot. I'm not hard on that also.
I mean, this is, this creates financial issues on the city side as far as police. Um, right now, they are required, the not-for-profit, they pay for security. If we're putting in $50,000, that means that we're paying for it ourselves, which means that we have to pay overtime and everything else.
How about SCOOP? Same thing?
Um, actually, Alder, uh, Chief Navarro, can you address that one?
And let's also not forget that the SCOOP is a three-day event. Wasn't it a two-day event? Where usually, the, I think they're only one day.
This would just be one day.
Yeah.
Um, uh, for SCOOP, we've had in the past been able to apply, uh, community-based grants, um, for costs when it comes to policing. Uh, but we also reach out to other jurisdictions 'cause, uh, uh, for assistance. So, they'll, they'll send us officers, uh, to help us out with the amount of people, the officers that are needed for the event.
The more times we ask, the less times we're gonna get it, because they only have so many, I mean, it's real, realistic. Like, they can only help us so, so often, you know what I mean? So, if we, I mean, you have to think, this isn't just this parade. There's gonna be other parades that are gonna wanna have the same thing.
Mm-hmm.
And we would be, there would not be a community grant enough to cover that. But if we ask, even for our own officers in the summer, unfortunately, we live in Illinois where there's only X amount of times you can do outdoor activities, we call back officers and pay overtime on it. Um, we do ask them initially to, um, sign up for overtime. If they don't, we have to hire back, which is even at a higher rate. So, these can get pretty expensive really quickly.
Yeah. Public safety, obviously, is, is a huge cost and a heavy hit to our budget. But, you know, it's also, uh, we work with fire there. We have to work with City Hall, uh, with City Yards, excuse me, um, during the events as well.
That way, we don't take away from, oh, you wanna go ahead?
Uh, Alderman Florian?
Um, I, I, I'm very concerned about the $50,000 towards the parade when we just talked earlier tonight about possibly having to raise taxes on people because the rubber's gonna hit the road soon. So, and then if you add in the fact that, okay, this, this is a great parade. It's a great event. I was very excited to see 30,000 people in the parade route this year, but everything went smoothly. I don't know why you keep saying there were problems this year, 'cause I didn't, I didn't see any problems. But let me finish before you go on. Um, I just think this sets a, a bad precedence for other parades, like, was mentioned earlier. The Pride Parade, Juneteenth. I mean, there's so many different events throughout the summer. How are we gonna stand here when people come and say to us, "Well, now you've done Fiestas Patras. You need to do Juneteenth. Well, now you've done Juneteenth. You need to do Pride. You need..." We, we are not in the business of providing entertainment, theater, frankly. We are in the business of providing services to people. Public Works, Fire, Police. That is what our job is. We are not in the job of provide, in the, in the, we should not be in the role of providing the event smoothly last year. Private individuals in charge of it, and we helped when, when we, where we needed to help, and everything went fine.
If I can also, I'm sorry to comment.
Okay, we're gonna do one, and then we're gonna do the vote. Okay?
You know, we, we all know the last couple of years, you know, again, I, I, I mentioned it earlier, uh, go and disrupt the whole process. If we take more responsibility with that, we, we can try to single these people, with that, we, we can try to single these people out, um, because we, we take more of an active role, more responsibility. So, that's another aspect.
We're gonna do that anyway. Haters are haters. They're gonna do, they're gonna try and sabotage anyway.
I would like to keep this for discussion. Because I, I don't think we have enough time. Uh, I, I would like to respond.
Hold it over?
Yeah.
Okay, perfect. Okay, at this point, I'm gonna ask us to adjourn so we can start our council meeting on time. Can I have a first and a second? Um, Alderman Newsom, second was Alderman Martinez. Okay. All tho, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Seven o'clock starts the council meeting.